Okay, we're going to get started. Is our special meeting the Board of Commissioners and City of Bonorme held today, Monday, April 7th, 2025, at 12:30 here in Commissioner's Chambers in Municipal Building? Call to order, determine whether the board is present.
Vice Commissioner Sebastian Martinez.
Here.
Commissioner Randy Dusman.
Here.
Mayor Casey Homer.
Here.
Mayor Yvonne Corr.
Great. Congrats on the indication, help us with the other meeting.
God be merciful unto us and bless us, especially do we pray that we may have your guidance in making our decisions at this meeting. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
I'd like to meet us.
To the flag.
In the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the pretence of all our power. To.
All right, move on to number one. Discuss and consider take possible action to review and approve the ETJ waiver request letter for the property located at 13809 Southwood, 604, Bonorme, Texas, 7073.
Okay, if you see this letter, uh, this property owner, he's had the property in his family for many years. Um, it's come down to him. He has purchased a manufactured home and put on it. And he's been trying to get a septic tank permit from Bear County, but they won't give it to him because he's an R A two J. Um, so we've been going back and forth with Bear County. And their, their solution is to, if we give them a waiver letter, they'll give him this permit.
That's it? Is this the property?
Is that also the property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, like, off over by, uh, on the north side.
By the, by the, yes.
Which will be the?
Behind the pilot.
And then this, on this side of where we're passing.
With the road pass, how many is?
It's on the other side.
Yeah, because that's for the houses they're at, okay.
Okay.
Well, my promise, if the county, if the county wanted to approve it, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve. Okay, let's go on one for a minute, second.
Okay, well, uh, so would you like to introduce the ETJ waiver request letter? To approve the letters. Motion is denied to approve the ETJ waiver letter. For a second.
Second.
I was the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay. Number two, discuss, consider and take possible action to approve the ETJ flooding I L A with Bear County.
So, there's some language in one of the articles that they want updated, um, but they've not sent me the language that they want yet, so I don't have it.
Okay.
He said, um, there's some archaic wording in the version in Article eight and Section 3.09 that needs to be updated. Other than that, it looks good, but I haven't been able to get a hold of the guy since then, so.
What's the difference between this one and the other approved?
That, what we've already approved is why he's saying it needs to be updated.
Oh, so we're not going to, so no action, yeah.
And where is this property?
This is for, uh, the ordinance with Bear County for the ETJ flooding.
So we won't have to do another one of these letters?
Yeah.
Yeah. We've already done that twice.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I had a question.
Sure.
It's part of my mind, and it's not, correct?
What?
When would it take to make it run only the ETJ?
Uh, primarily voluntary annexation.
I'm just, uh, we can't do it as a, as a city.
We used to, but the laws changed two years ago. Jacob, you.
Now, we're, so the state legislature has taken a real stance against the expansiveness of cities and are trying to curb municipal regulation, uh, and so now basically voluntary annexation is the only way for a city to expand. So unless they want to join the city.
Yeah.
We can't allow them to force them to join the city.
But we can ask them.
If they, if they would like to do it voluntarily, we will open, welcome, welcome them with open arms, but.
So we, we're going to step, step to that with the asking.
Now, we can't, I wouldn't say we can condition it, that's kind of, it's like a.
No, but wouldn't, wouldn't you just condition, we just mention it to them? Would you like to join the city or not?
If you.
It's not going in, right?
Yeah.
They're making it work.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to go deliver this letter and say, hey, I got your ear. Yeah, I mean, they, they're welcome. You ask people to join, but we can't force them.
Yeah, there's two businesses next to me. They're probably, they tax, uh, probably tax.
You, you should have, uh, bear expression.
So really, the only people we want to give into our property tax bracket for is somebody who's going to be generating the sales tax. So like, if we were to buy a Dollar General or Walmart or something, those are the people we give property tax exemptions to.
Yeah.
Because we're going to get it back on the sales tax. Um, now, for somebody who's not generating the sales tax, it doesn't make sense to welcome them into the city and not charge them property tax, so.
But that's a big business right there.
Yeah.
And they, and they might just go for it.
Yeah, that works out.
Well, we're trying to get on with the bridge right here.
Oh, yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
But that's, that's in the zone.
Right.
Okay, next.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion that we take action to approve that ETJ flooding I L A with Bear County.
Well.
But we already approved it, and so they, we're going to, we've, we approved it last time, so we don't need to do.
I totally approved.
Yeah, they were going to have some edits that they were going to bring back, but they didn't give it to us in time.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't need to take any actions. Number two, but we'll move on to number three. Discuss, consider and take possible action to conditionally approve the replat application for Encanto Hill subdivision pending the recommendations of the city engineer. So this is a, an item that I was curious about where, where the status was, well, are some of you here to speak on?
Yes, I am, I, I am, um.
Would you like to be recognized to talk about the project?
Sure, I don't know the formal rules, but, you know, I'd be happy to, you know, speak up and.
Sure.
Um.
You want to just tell us a little bit about, I know we're going to be different to Brandon, I guess there's a city plan, okay?
Oh, that's okay, break it down for us.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, I own the manufactured home dealership right here. And so that was, you know, that was, um, you know, our, that's the original plan was to, was to have lots that were affordable, close to the lot, that we could put, you know, new manufactured homes in and create a, create a restricted subdivision. In other words, you know, the homes that were going to go in there, we're going to have to have, you know, they were all going to be uniform, they were going to be, they had to be skirted, they had to have a driveway, they had to have decks, right? So you have a, you know, uh, an affordable housing option, close to, it's going to be the closest subdivision, um, to San Antonio, right? And then we ran into some roadblocks, we, you know, um, we ran, we, we had trouble getting the road permits and, and that held up our utilities and all that. And now there's, you know, whispers that manufactured homes may not even be allowed in there, and so I just came here to see what we're at and what we're trying to do, um, you know, um, but just over, just overall, you know, just, you know, my, my, when I look at this, manufactured, you know, housing is, is, is a viable, affordable, affordable housing option for your working class people, you know, um, what are, you know, like in a, in a verb like Bonorme, what would be the other option for housing? Well, um, they would have to get a custom-built home. And a custom-built home, you would actually have to buy all the materials for one house at retail price, you know, KB and, and Dr. Corn and all those guys, they buy the subdivision, you know, they, they buy huge lots and then they make three homes, they make them all the same, you know, they, they get, you know, laborers and they're able to create economies of scale, and you can't do that on custom homes. You know, so, so really, the only other option, um, the next viable, affordable option would be manufactured homes, and that's something that's, you know, more achievable, more payable, especially for the demographic in this area attracts, you know, and so, you know, um, so it was going to complement, you know, our, our business as well, right? It's only, you know, 14 tracks, right? So I've got 14 in, in, in our past 14. Um, so that's kind of what we're at, and, and like I said, we've, we've come across some roadblocks and trying to get a project. I've been sitting on this property for a year, I haven't been able to sell it, I've been looking for, all I've been doing has been, you know, um, you know, I, I bought the property and then I, you know, I took a loan out on it, so I've been paying interest, you know, I, you know, about $24,000, I haven't been able to get any return on it, and I'm just seeing if there's anything we can do to move this project along.
Yeah, that's, I think, the first step, what's being considered, say, is the plat.
Mm-hmm.
And.
The replat, yeah, the first plat was already approved.
Yep. And then we have new orders, so Brandon, can you pick up from there and kind of tell us where we are?
Yeah, absolutely, so, uh, yeah, good to meet you, and we're working with you on this. Um, and so, yeah, we, uh, the city has a statutory requirement to approve plats within a certain timeframe. This one's a little bit different, you know, because it's, it's technically, I think, I think technically what it is, um, would be a vending plat, uh, I, I think that's, it's kind of a difficult one because it's recorded at the county, but we're going to go through and, you know, officially, uh, approve the plat, and there were some things that, you know, need to be corrected on this one. Um, and then addressed at the legislative level, you know, the city's code, um, does not allow for private roads, you know, you guys are, you'll have private roads on there.
And, and, you know, I really felt like that was a discrepancy, this, you know, the, the roads are actually part of each property, so they're technically not even a road, it's an easement to the property.
Right, so, so, no, I totally understand, I, nobody has an issue with it.
Yes.
It's just, it's just the people in this room don't have the ability to approve it without the board actually voting on it, because the city has, uh, a law, uh, has a city law that says no lot, uh, or all lots that are platted must be certified by the county. And so you guys aren't going to do that, makes perfect sense, it doesn't, doesn't make any practical sense for the taxpayers of Bonorme to be, to own and have to pay to maintain a private, dead road, so it makes perfect sense, we just have to, there's a process for that, so, so that's, that's something that.
So in, in our mind, not in our mind, that was always an easement because that, you know, it's an easement onto the property, and there was, it was just two road, right?
That takes very sense.
So, so, um, and when it was planted, I don't even believe that these ordinances were in place, right? When we initially bought the property.
Oh, yeah, the city, yeah, the city has.
I don't know, yeah, no, it's, no, it's, the city's only goes in place, so it's, no, nobody.
And that's something we're actually, the process is updating, and so the next meeting we have after this is on selling, uh, new codes, trying to make it kind of really the process easier.
And we've been, you know, we've been complying, you know, we, you know, we're getting the studies and the runoffs and all that, even though it's not a full plan or anything like that, you know, um, but anyways, I guess we're right here.
No, we're, we're all on the same page, we're wanting to get this done for you, okay? So, yeah, this should, you know, give, uh, there are certain things, any plat, no matter where you plat, you know, the stuff that you're having to go through isn't something special for Bonorme, this is just the way planning happens anywhere in Texas, um, you go to any city, if you go up, you know, to go develop something in Burberry, or if you go over and develop something in Castro, or if you go anywhere else, um, state law requires that, that you not flood out anywhere, because state law, state law says whatever, state law says it won't ever run off you, so that's why you have to drain analysis, so, so the drainage analysis that you're doing has nothing to do with flood plan or not, it just, it just says you're creating permiss coverage, and so we have to make sure that you're not running off, uh, on your neighbors.
I believe that's already done, right?
Yes, so they, we submitted the drainage analysis, and so the way our subdivision process works.
But let's, let's pause for a second. Are we all tracking which property, I know I mentioned it.
And the one with.
In the city road, uh, five minutes man, shot right.
Yeah.
You told me about the first half or the second?
The first half.
Well, we, we'd like to get that, everything approved, not with Kansas City together, you know, I mean, Art owns, Art owns the top one, I own the bottom one.
Well, Art on that side, you on that side, where they started the road.
I own the side closest to, to the access road.
To the dealership, okay. Where they started the road.
Yes, yes.
What does Art own?
Uh, Art's the other piece.
Yeah.
So his, his is involved in the same plat, but I think Mo has his portion, uh, you know, Art has his portion, Art's not doing any of it.
Well, we, I mean, we'd like to get everything approved at the same time, I mean, also the, on the license, for.
Trademarked.
Yeah, it's one, yeah, it's one plat, it's one plat.
It's going to be manufactured homes?
Well, can you speak to that?
That's, that's the plan, and, and.
Both, both properties?
I think it's going to be mixed use, I think that, you know, it's, it's not only going to be manufactured homes, because some customers have, you know, inquired about building, you know, regular housing on there too, so, I mean, if they want to do that, we're not going to, I don't want to restrict that, but, but I, I believe that in the end the majority will be new manufactured homes.
And so that, that would be a separate process from what we're approving today, or looking at approving territory features of the plat. So my question to Brandon, as the current ordinances state, I believe there's a, a permit requirement if there were to be manufactured homes.
Correct. As the current ordinance states.
Because that would be each property, so like each time a customer comes in, they're buying a lot, they're buying a home, that's going to be a separate.
It would not permit, yes.
Right, that's a separate permit.
Yes.
Don't, don't, shouldn't we? We don't want a permit.
Well, it's a neighborhood.
Well, it's the, it's the zoning ordinance, so it's, it's already in the zoning ordinance, so they'll just need a special use permit.
Yeah, it's like a zone change, it, a special use permit is the same as a zone change in terms of the process, it has to come before you own, and you all have to give approval.
Yeah.
And so there's kind of two, there's the existing zoning, like you mentioned, we do have some stuff we're working on, uh, an exit distance.
How's your, what is your position in there?
Uh, I'm Casey Homer.
Okay.
Yeah, we've spoke on the phone before, yeah.
Okay, yeah, you're the mayor.
I'm the mayor, you know, I'm in express.
Okay, that's, okay, yeah, okay. I don't know what I was wrong with yet.
Uh, we, we admit we did it first, uh, but, okay.
Okay.
We're speaking for friends, so. But yeah, so we have the existing zoning ordinance, which does require special use permit, and then we have a new ordinance that we're working on, uh, our new zoning code, and that's something that you have to apply for, so I guess that's my question, so it's currently zoned for the existing zoning code, so you'd be centered in the existing zoning code, it requires special use permits. You could have the opportunity to rezone to one of the future of the districts, we're not rezoning any existing properties, there would be an opportunity where you could rezone to a potential different zoning district, that might be a little bit easier, but as it is now, uh, the zoning district that you have, it does require a special use permit, so anytime a home's going to come in, we'd go through a separate permit process on each home, so what we're proving today has nothing to do with the actual home or manufactured home or not, what we're looking at today is, is approving half-acre lots, which is what?
Half-acre rooms?
Half-acre, right?
Half-acre rooms.
Well, at least the last, I haven't seen a recent version, but we have, we have the half-acre. So we have the new version, what we're concerned today?
And they have to be half-acre, because that's the minimum requirement for.
Except.
Each individual person will have their own set.
See, I, I don't have a plot problem, but it's just, you have the last part of the plan recommendation, wait, from the city engineer.
So, if I, if I may, uh, there's a few different ways that you can approve a lot, you know, a lot of times, a lot of cities will, um, require that the drainage analysis, the traffic impact analysis, the construction plans, if you guys had your engineer prepare, uh, that all of that stuff be reviewed and approved first, before you can come out here and get approval of your plat. But the city of Bonorme, and working with the board and the mayor, uh, we wanted to create a process that was a little bit more easier for people, so, uh, the new process we created today, or that we created is that you can come and get your approval of the plat before those things are, uh, finally approved.
Yeah.
And so that's why we're out here today, is to, the plat looks good, um, it, it meets all aspects that go, um, we just need to finish up with reviewing those documents, so what, what we're recommend with the city, what the board is, um, going to do today, and what I recommend is that they, they approve it conditionally, so they approve it under the condition that the city engineer, uh, finalizes her approval of the drainage analysis, the construction plans for your private road, um, and, uh, and those, and, and also on the conditional approval that the board grants a separate, uh, approval of the private road. We're going to have to have separate items for the private road, but, um, but the plat, that's just one process, so I'm recommending, hey, approve it.
And that's been, that's been the whole up is, is getting the road done and in, um, so we can at least, because we still got to bring in, we still got to bring in the water, we still got to bring in, which, which they have their own engineers and, and those folks on that.
And we've got, we've got everything for that, so that was, so that was what the holdup was for the city.
Yes.
Because we just can't let you build a road without plans.
Yes.
You can't build it without plans, so, so we got the plans, I think, last month or three or four weeks ago, um, the engineer is, is reviewing those, she takes about, you know, 15 to 30 days or so, so she's going to get that done, and so now that we have the plans, we can actually, we can issue them, but we didn't have that before, so.
But I'll say this, that this, you know, uh, there's going to be new or newer manufactured homes, you know, these homes are going to be, you know, skirted, there's going to be broadways, there's going to be decks, and it's going to be very nice, looky uniform, and if any of the council would like to comment for some of the, the new manufactured homes, you're free to come by the office, and we'll take, we'll show you around a little bit, you know, you can see that, you know, the, the, these homes, um, they, they've got, you know, ECOB and S system, they've got upgraded insulation systems, they're using trained air conditioners, that, you know, they're all star energy rated, you know, they're, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's not your grandma's trailer, you know, and these are, these, these are, you know, uh, homes built to, you know, hub standard, and, and they either exceed either, either your site load standards, the only, the only difference is the, is the, you know, they're on parent name instead of a, and then some of these packages will actually be on, on, you know, FHA constructive concrete runners, you know, designed to meet the, the financing requirements, so.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, that's great, thanks for that, information will.
Yeah.
And if someone comes around, definitely.
Yeah.
So your, so your recommendation is to approve the.
I recommend you approve the replat under the condition that, uh, the city engineer, uh, finalizes her review, that, under the condition that the city engineer approves the associated drainage analysis, uh, and construction plans, which is part of what we talked about when we created the subdivision code.
Um, so it's about approval pending administrative.
Exactly, and approval, and so that's, you know, when we created the subdivision code, the goal was that you can submit the document.
Right.
Without those, without the drainage analysis and those things, and then following approval, um, those, those items are reviewed and then pending approval, then they can go record the plat, and so they submitted all those things with the package, um, and so, yeah, yeah, we needed, so it's just, it's good, good business to just recommend approval with the condition that those associated things are approved, and also recommend, uh, approval under the condition that this board approves a separate variance, which is the zoning variance that needs to come before the board, we communicated that with the applicant, but under the condition that this board, the planning, acting in their capacity as a planning commission, and then in their capacity as a board, that they approve the variance to then be able to have the private roads, because that's a zoning requirement, unfortunately, this time it's a zoning requirement.
Well, that'd be early at the zoning meeting.
Exactly, yeah.
But here we're regularly, so we're just approving the replat pending administration.
We want to approve the replat, but we didn't stick to our threshold requirement for, for that base.
All right, so they actually could or can't approve, uh, the replat application.
Pending administrative, correct. Pending administrative.
Pending, yeah, uh, it's included in there, engineer pending that, I would like to make a motion to redo that.
All right, motion is made to approve the replat application for Encanto Hill subdivision, uh, pending administrative completeness, is there a second? Item is the second, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. There we go.
Hey, now, chill, chill, hold on, hold on, play it again.
Yeah, well, I need a road. So, and that's, and when, when we'll be able to second press the road issue?
So, I don't know, where, where are you at with the plans, have you seen the engineering plans for the road?
I haven't, she, she should have them this week, I think, when talking to her.
I spoke to her, yes, I spoke to her Friday, and I spoke to her this morning, so.
Yeah. So if there's any issues with it, she'll get that.
Okay, so we have, that's how it works.
Okay, it's coming pretty soon, so we can get that, get the, the new plat recorded.
From time to time, the wheels are motioning.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, pretty much.
Okay, what's on my head, that's all I saw was that foot.
Yeah, so I'm on you.
Yeah.
We're here, but.
Okay, that's, that's, thank you.
Whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, number four, discuss, consider and take possible action, set date, tie to regular April 2025 meeting.
I won't be here, I'll be at the training tomorrow.
Oh.
So, it's on you all, and you keep it the same for.
So then, that, that, next meeting, new week, right?
Yes, next week, I'll be in the training.
And this is already, uh.
Next week is the third one.
Second week, yeah. Okay.
Want to just push it back a week to the 24th?
Will you be here?
Was that for yesterday?
On the 24th?
When is the battle of last?
Battle of last.
Well, it's good for you, you're posted on the plan.
It's May 2nd.
So, 24th works? Works?
Yeah.
Make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion that, uh, we move me for April 24th.
All right, motion has been made to move the regular April 2025 meeting to, uh, April 24th, to the second. I have some seconded, and further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. All right, number five, would like to make a motion, adjourned.
I make a motion, adjourned.
I have a question.
Motion has been made to adjourn, is there a second?
I'm going to, I'm going to.
No, I hear.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Yes.
Totally agree with you.
That's my question, on the joint meeting, should I just put adjourned on the second one?
Um.
Because we have to adjourn this one, we can start it.
Yeah.
It's, okay.
All right, motion has been made to adjourn, is there a second? I have been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. All right, we're going to move into this zoning, uh, commissioners of the city of Bonorme to conduct a meeting here in Commissioner's Chambers in Municipal Building located on 14729 Bonorme Horse, directly following our special meeting that started at 12:30. Call to order and determine if the board is present.
All right, Commissioner Sebastian Martinez.
Here.
Commissioner Randy Dusman.
Here.
Mayor Casey Homer.
Here.
Mayor Yvonne Corr.
Great. And number one, discuss, consider, take possible action, we're going to change and amend code for the city of Bonorme. So there's just some changes from our survey. Let's go through these changes, and we'll go have to copy, there's a whole lot. First one on page 13. Now we're adjusting the base districts.[1726.34]
Yes, sir.
So we've changed the farm and ranch district to a state district. So we've opened district provided for land, land for large lot residential development, open space, agricultural activities, just removing the limitation for building regional streets. I like that.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I just, you know, it just made a little bit of nonsense. I, I felt like it made sense just, just to call it the estate district. You know, it seems like the, from the survey, the citizens are just, they want larger lots, period. They don't, they don't want density, they want larger lots, so it just made more sense just to call it estate. With the estate, you can do agricultural if you want to.
Right.
And it'd make it more flexible. Why wouldn't, why, agriculture, large lots be flexible in that? So, so yeah, make, felt like that made sense just to go that direction.
Cool. Uh, then the next change is the neighborhood district shall mean zoning districts intended for conventional detached, some of the residential occupancy, attached or detached, assessed with dwelling units, deleting in living spaces attached to the family, any two family occupancies.
Yeah, again, you know, pursuant to the survey, it, you know, the, the initial draft was gonna provide some options for different housing types, you know, whether it's maybe some smaller lots, some, maybe some townhouse, you know, some more, I'd call some affordable housing types. But it's like from the survey that, you know, the citizens really are, they don't want townhouses, they don't want duplexes, they don't want apartments, but they're fine with conventional, uh, conventional sized lots, and they're, and they're fine with small, smaller lots. And so really what I did was just simplify it in terms of the survey. I just turned the MD one into more of a conventional zoning district, and I turned the MD two into more of a small district. Keep it simple, just really, and so, and when we get further down, I made some changes to the lot sizes to correspond. And, and so I think it's just, it's, it doesn't provide for as much flexibility, which is totally cool, but the citizens, you know, some places are wanting to, you know, accommodate different housing types, but, so that's why the initial draft had the notice. Again, I think this is kind of a lot cleaner and more succinct with the survey.
In the final version, the final format is the planned development district, trying to be listed as one of these just alongside the districts in the property.
No, sir, it could.
Right?
It's, a planned development district, you know, there is no permitted use matrix there, because make it up, you know?
All the thing from like a marketing advertising, like you still want people to apply.
It might be easier to understand if it was not just listed.
Yeah.
For them to go look for it.
Yeah, it's inherent, if you keep scrolling down, it's, uh, it's still under planned districts, section two point zero six.
Gotcha.
I didn't make any changes to it. So you've got your stand, you've got your legacy districts, then you have your base districts, and then you have your planned districts.
So from an administrative standpoint, you'd be like your go-tos, and it's like, well, why can't I do this?
Why?
And then you can approve it all along.
I don't want pancakes and bacon, I want pancakes and eggs and bacon and hash, oh, there's your planned development district.
Okay. So the next change is going to page twenty.
Page ten?
Page ten.
Okay. I bet that's probably gonna be our first planned development district, it's gonna be a planned development district for a car house.
So we're good with no car houses? We're good with no car houses on page twenty? We removed any use for car houses, which I would assume to be game rooms?
Machines.
Lot machines? Yeah.
Come on, do this.
Yeah, so we got none of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, the next change, fitness club. So I noticed there was a change with the legacy districts. Are those changes that are in the existing use matrix that you're just updating, or those changes that you're putting in based off the survey?
So I had made, in my initial draft, I had made changes to the uses that are currently allowed in the city's existing zoning districts, which we call them legacy districts. So I had made changes to some of the allowed uses in there for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's my understanding there are uses that are currently permitted in the C district that you guys are not wanting to continue there. And number two, I made changes to that because at the end of the day, the goal is to incentivize people to change to the new districts. And so if you, if you leave certain uses in the C district, like warehousing, you know, there's, there's lots of things out there that are a little bit heavier commercial, or there are things out there that maybe aren't best for the city's tax base. Those were my recommendations. And so now that we've gotten the survey, and it's clear that the citizens really want to see these things, it's important to them, maybe above other trade-offs, such as the economic base, you know, people are wanting to see more, I think some of the other things like banks and things, banks aren't really great for your tax base.
Quality line.
Especially, yeah, quality line, banks are not good for your tax base, you know, because they don't generate sales tax, and they don't generate, or they do generate animal world taxes, but y'all don't have much of an animal world tax. I think it was, but I wouldn't allow big banks to go out there. But the citizens said they want to see that, so that's why I went ahead and changed that stuff to make those easier for people to come in to the city with existing zoning districts if you citizens said they want to see that.
Because he fitness club is one of those. Food truck is permitted in regional districts. That's a condition. Tavern bar is removed from the community district, makes sense, based off the survey. Animal hospital and bank added to the commercial. And then bank added to regionals, makes sense. Clinic, oh, my page twenty-two now. Clinics permitted, data center, so we have one additions, and you have an L, and the limiting factor is four acres. I don't know enough about data centers, but I would assume they're a lot bigger than that.
I put the limiting factor in there because, you know, again, I threw that in there because I didn't, I didn't want to be quick to just say no data centers, because they do provide a lot of jobs. Uh, but at the same time, they don't generate any sales tax, and again, you guys don't have much of a.
Five billion dollar investment, even at a local retail.
Right. So again, but at the same time, you know, I'm always going to advocate efficient use of land, you know, because when you get really large uses that come in, like campuses, any kind of campus or anything, you know, lots of, the more really large uses you have that take up twenty acres or so, the more land you guys are losing for your tax base, and the more land somebody has, depending on how much money they've got to come in, they may or may not efficiently use the land, and then, and then your whole tax base is already spoken for.
So like four acres are part of the number five?
No, four acres is tied with, with the block sizes.
Compared to data center, I just don't know what a data center is. We've got the emails.
The most of the things I get from the governor's office, probably half of them are data centers. It's, the state's pushing data centers hard.
And, and somebody can always potentially, and if you go look at it, potentially he's a planned development district or something like that, you know, and make sure they design it nicely and whatnot, so. I, yeah, my advice is to put some sort of limitation in there so it puts you in a negotiating position.
Well, the data centers don't generate a whole lot of jobs.
It's, it's minimal jobs, it's like five to seven jobs, they're high income jobs, it's mostly just computers.
Okay, so that value is part of it.
Part of it, so this says it's about forty acres.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Forty?
I know they're putting one in between battalion divine, but I don't know how big they're.
Something like the one past Castorville, it's huge, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're already going up there.
I would be curious, kind of wondering just from a marketability standpoint, if, it's just a thought that could be, I don't know what you think, if we add a column that said planned development district, PDD, and had an L for all of them.
Then it's possible.
That it's possible, and then reference the L with submittal of, the limiting factor of submittal of planned development district and approval of items specifically.
I would recommend against that, because what you're doing is you're already starting to make a bit of a promise in there, and that's one reason why I don't recommend you use specific use permits, because, you know, the purpose of a planned development district is, is to be, is, it's zoning for a project, not a land use. Um, and that's, that's where the statutes are set up. A planned development district is intended to facilitate game project. And so when you put it in your permitted land use, you know, matrix, you're basically, then you're, then you're making a planned development district be a function of land uses, which, which I don't think, I just don't think it's.
Makes sense. I think from a marketing standpoint, when somebody's just going through looking at cities to target projects, I mean, the use matrix is the easiest that I just, you know, look at.
I mean, I would.
I don't want to turn away, because those data centers do bring significant investment in infrastructure.
Yes.
I'll say, in my experience, and this comes from somebody that does what you're explaining, the person that you're talking about that would hypothetically be looking at, at the zoning code, they are trained to look for that planned development district. I don't think they're gonna turn away. You know, that's one of the first things I do, you know, in my experience, one of the first things anybody, that's whether they're an engineer or an engineer or somebody, when they're doing their due diligence, they look through, and if it's not a permitted use matrix, the very next thing they do is look and see if there's a planned development district option. So, so yeah, I think, I worry that it's setting you guys up for, you know, basically, you know, creating, because, because again, the purpose of a planned development district is not to create the limitations. The idea, the concept behind the limited approval is that it's, that it's administrative. You know, anything, you know, all the limitations, the purpose of the limitations is so it's administratively approvable, which I think is a marketing thing, where people are like, oh, cool, it's limited, it's not a specific use permit. If we meet these five things, then we know it'll be approved administratively, and we don't have to come before the board.
So, well, then with running with the four acre, just based on what we've seen, I'm not as special as the data center by your means, but what's in check now? It's under the four. I get what you're saying, the land use perspective, you don't have that much land?
Yeah.
But given where we are in infrastructure?
They could come in and pull the water.
Yeah, or the, or the electricity, or the internet, all things that we don't have enough capacity already.
Yeah.
To serve us in the moment.
Yeah, I think to bring it back to a general level, you know, as a planner, I'm always trying to like link these regulations to the real world and, and what this stuff translates to. In my opinion, just the way Mr. Ling was talking about the way the market is down here for manufacturing homes, I don't disagree with him all. That's the way the market is, and we're gonna talk about manufacturing homes in a minute. But I think in terms of commercial uses, market here, and especially with just the economy the way it is in two thousand twenty-five, there's gonna be a lot of demand for really large, huge uses down here, like data centers, warehousing, and I don't know if you guys have been to North Texas lately? If you go to Dallas, was it?
Was it?
Yeah, North Texas, especially if you go to places like north of Fort Worth, it is just huge concrete boxes everywhere. Um, so I think that's something for y'all to think about when you, when you deliberate on whether to allow, you know, whether to, to limit something to four acres or not. What you're doing is you're, you're totally shaping what Bonn Oregon is gonna be, whether or not it's gonna be this place, like, it's kind of like North Texas with these huge, big sites, with these huge concrete boxes that are basically just kind of, the city itself has the potential to become just a big terminal, you know, a big, a big terminal, rather than, you know, if you guys are wanting to turn this more into like a, you know, a, a city, you know, a lot of cities like Castorville and other cities are wanting to, to focus on smaller scale uses, because they're focusing on a sense of place and trying to build a community, uh, that, that doesn't have all these huge corporate uses in it. A lot of cities are wanting to do that, and that's kind of where I started with this code, was under the state, understanding that you guys are wanting to create a community, you're wanting to create a sense of place here, and that's why there are limitations in there for four acres, because that limits the scale and size of these huge corporate developments. But if you get rid of that, then that creates an opening just to kind of become like North Texas, where it's just all big, you know, corporations with the big, so there, that's the reason.
But R D three is already limited based off like where it is. You know, there's already limitations for the R D three district as it is.
Yeah.
I, I know the survey didn't want data centers, but I don't think, I don't think the general public knows what comes with a data center.
And the value.
It's the same with tourism, they don't want tourism, I don't think they understand the sales tax nature to it.
I don't know. I would like us to do, and we didn't always approve it today, but zoning commission, it will come out to it later, but in between that, I'd like us to do some research on what, yeah, what data centers actually look like.
Subject to change.
Yeah, subject to change.
Yeah, not bad.
Just to, you know.
But they will approve some.
Yeah.
Although after we can keep going, you'll.
Rather than real. Okay. Uh, the next one, health studios permitted in the commercial. All right, page twenty-four, assisted living facilities, daycare, hospital, nursing homes, all added back to commercial districts, just good. Daycare is permitted in daycare or residential. A little limitation on there for no more than six, which is the state law, six what? Six individual if being cared for? That's a, yeah, new districts. All right. And then permitted, you know, R Ds.
Okay, so if they want a data center, a hundred billion dollar investment, but they want a thousand acres.
And they'll, and they'll bring in a multinational tax relief company to get retention and give them a roll over.
Liquor stores added as a new distinction, they're permitted in commercial, C D, R Ds, or if you have any stats. Wholesale was changed to L from R D two. Can you speak to that change? Wholesale.
Say it.
Wholesale.
Let me scroll down.
Page twenty-four, the bottom of page twenty-four.
Oh, you know what? Mayor, I think I, um, I thought that I was changing warehouse, I realized, um, where's warehouse? I meant, that, that should have been warehouse, warehouse, is that in the fact area?
Burger's house?
Warehouse is on twenty-six.
Yes, uh, no, I, wholesale, um, that, uh, that should, that actually, I meant to change warehouse, so change that back, sorry.
Okay, so it's back.
I will fix that, yeah, I'm gonna put on the warehouse. Well, actually, no, okay, yeah, I just changed that back for me, sorry.
All right, the next one, uh, live work, that was one, I was expecting to see a change. So that's one that, uh, we kind of talked about, some of the existing live work, uh, relationships and businesses, the existing ordinances that allow people to have businesses at their home. I didn't realize, uh, you had made that many changes to the legacy districts. But that's one that I know there was like a separate ordinance specifically to allow people to work at home. Why, why is it prohibited?
So.
The legacy districts.
So Mayor, live work, uh, the traditional definition of live work is typically different than home occupation. Live work, and this is where, um, the next step that I need to finish is all the definitions that I'm going to, in a, in a traditional or like a building code perspective, live work is typically like a little bit more of a business, like the bottom floor has, you know, like an engineering company where you have four or five people down there. So that, the building code kind of recognizes that as not so much a home occupation where, you know, you know, you just have a little business that you run out of your house, maybe you have one person, like you do taxes out of your house, and it's just you. And so, um, in the survey, we called it live work, but I think that when people, and maybe if we had to do it in the survey, we should have just called it home occupation. And so when people say they want to be able to live and work in the same place, I think what they're referring to, because they're thinking in their minds, home occupation, and, uh, and the code already doesn't allow that as an accessory use. So if you go down, so I just left live work alone as a. So if you go down, uh, so I just left live-work alone as it is. And I'll provide a definition of live-work, um, to kind of show that that's different than maybe like, shipping guns out of your house or something, or some other type of home occupation that people have. So if you go down to, um, uh, the accessory uses section, section three oh six, um, and scroll down, you'll see home occupation there.
Yeah, it's limited to only one resident. And a time, and a time?
Yeah, so, uh, because right now, I think, you, you already have, I can look at your code right now, because y'all got limitations on home occupations in your code right now. So, uh, so yeah, basically the home occupation, uh, it allows you to, you know, I can, you know, you could be a lawyer out of your house, you know, it's just you. But you can have people, your clients come over to see you, or you could be a state farm agent, you know, and you have people come over, you know, but it's just you working out of the house. If you really wanna operate like an office out there and have three or four employees, that's, that's a little more residential use. And that's more of a live-work situation. And the code recognizes it, the building code recognizes it differently too. So, um. You want to look at what the current code, I'm curious with the current. Yeah.
As I recall, I was very linked to work with this, this early on.
Yeah, it's, it's.
People put a lot of thought into it.
But that makes sense for this conversation though, as far as live-work goes. Okay, here I am, that's, uh, page forty-six of the current code. Home occupation regulations. Home occupation shall be permitted as an accessory use in single-family residential zoning districts, provided they align with all the residential restrictions. Okay, so this says, uh, the occupa-, the occupation shall produce no alteration or change in the character of visible appearance of the building. Such use shall be incidental to the premises and shall not utilize the core area exceeding twenty percent. So it's like we're giving them a little bit more in our code, hypo twenty-five. So, so far we're providing more flexibility in the current code. It says, the occupation shall not employ more than one person who is not a member of the housing. So code I read.
So total family can work, so in whole business.
So, so basically, well, I just basically mirrored what the current zoning regulations allow right now, except you gave them an additional five percent area. And then the current code actually regulates it more than I did. It said, no more than two patients of business-related vehicles. I didn't even address it, yeah.
Okay.
Lots of other things, that's what I wanted to.
Okay, going into the residential groups, uh, principal, uh, principal use. So we reviewed apartment buildings from NV twos. They are allowed on CDs. I think since this was a survey. Uh, we've added manufactured homes to the residential. Also permitted in the state district. Uh, that's L, so the language you added. Manufacturer homes, manufacturer homes shall be limited to only those which are under occupied, placed upon a permanent foundation. And existing platted lots in RD districts which are abutted on both the side lot lines by a lot occupied by manufacturer home. Or tracts of land in the R district exempt from plating requirements. The replacement of these, so what would be, uh, tracts of land in the R district exempt from plating requirements?
Over five acres.
Okay. All right, there's one about the existing platted lot lines in the R district which are abutted on both sides. Lot lines by a lot occupied by manufacturer home.
I think it's, I, I put that in there because I, you know, you, again, this was my attempt to, to try to address the citizens in the survey. You had basically more or less fifty-fifty. Fifty percent of the city is fine, fifty percent of the people that took the survey are fine having a manufactured home anywhere in the city, and the other fifty percent are not fine with it. And that, and if you look at the people that took the survey, it's a fifty-fifty breakdown on who took the survey too. So fifty, if you look at the people that took the survey, fifty percent of them live in a manufactured home and the other fifty don't. So basically, I mean, can't be exact, but it's, it's, you could deduce that the people that live in a manufactured home are fine with them going anywhere, and the people that don't live in a manufactured home and live in a site called home are not fine with them going anywhere. And so, to me, uh, a logical way to respond to that with the regulation is by saying, if you're a buddy, if you have, if you have a lot and there's a manufactured home on both sides, chances are the people on both sides of you took the survey and said, I don't mind if manufactured homes go in anywhere, much less next to me. So it's very easy to say, hey, that, that's logical. But if you have someone, say, that has a lot, that's some, that is vacant, and you have a site called house on one side and you have a manufactured home on the other, chances are based on the survey that the person that lives in that site called home does not want a manufactured home to go next to them. And so, I think a logical way is if you have, if it's a site that has manufactured on both sides, chances are, somebody's not gonna have an issue with that because they live in a manufactured home. So why wouldn't let that person go?
Wouldn't we just regulate them like?
Mayor, I'm looking for just the city hall of the city.
The blue building.
Blue building?
Yes.
And your, your citizens are saying they don't want manufactured homes everywhere. Anyway.
Um, so what if we just, what if we have restrictions, like they have to be on appropriate base, they have to be, however you all wanna regulate, you have, like Moby said, they, the driveway needs scurrying.
Yeah, but, again.
Like, like one per lot? Like a single-family residence, like, can we do it that way? That's kind of like a compromise.
I would, again, I would, I would recommend if you require the skirting and permanent foundation.
So when you say permanent foundation, when, because they're not, they don't sit on a permanent foundation.
Well, they have to, they have to be on, you know, they can't, you know.
Does that hurt?
It's too many. Yeah, they have to be placed upon a permanent footing, permanent.
So it should say footing.
So, foot, yeah.
Not a permanent foundation, you don't have a permanent foundation.
I consider foundation to be pure and mean. Not a slab, sorry, yeah. I, I consider foundation to be pure and mean or some sort of block footing.
I mean, is that compromised for now?
I mean, I think it's restricted just to say what your neighbors have. Again, thought process, yeah, makes sense.
Uh, I can't see how that, you know, addresses it, uh, I don't know, I don't know.
You can't control what your neighbors have.
Yeah.
Well, I think what you're, but you can, and I, and again, I'm trying, I know this is a, this is a touchy subject, and I know this is kind of a philosophical thing. But, you know, your, your citizens took a survey and they said, in the survey, we want the city to regulate activities through zoning. And then they also said in another question, fifty, over fifty percent said, we don't want manufactured homes everywhere. So you have fifty-one percent, and if you look at the people that took the survey, fifty-one percent of your citizens that took the survey live in a site called home, and those people said, we don't want manufactured homes everywhere. I don't want a manufactured home next to me.
We're not competition, is it?
Yeah.
But we still, yeah, but they didn't, didn't, and real fast, I just wanna make sure. The question didn't say, are you fine with manufactured homes provided they're beautiful? The question says, do you want manufactured homes? And so, again, this last thing I'll say on it, I'm just saying, your citizens didn't say they're fine with manufactured homes everywhere as long as you're fine. They said they don't want them everywhere. And so, my recommendation is that you all come up with tools in your code that don't allow them everywhere, but do provide flexibility for them some places. So if you guys, if you do what you're talking about, you're basically going against the survey and you're allowing them.
Or we haven't finished talking about it.
Yeah, no, I, again.
One point.
Six years at the same time, if I go buy a lot, I go buy it and I don't want to go buy manufactured home on it.
But what's the matter with the neighbor house?
What, what's the regulations now?
They're not allowed, so you guys are making the regulations less restrictive.
Okay.
So.
Well, we get a social use permit, they apply for a permit.
Yeah, but is it only a slab?
That's what I'm saying, I mean, like if we require, like in Italian, you can't bring in a single Y, you can't have to bring in a double Y or bigger. You have to bring in a double Y, it has to be on a concrete footie, it has to have, you know, X, Y, and Z.
I don't, I don't want to see, I want double Y, okay? I, I don't want a bunch of junk that they're building over there, great homes, looks like a prison.
Those are where?
Those are normal.
Across the river?
Oh, those are stick-built homes.
Huh?
Those are stick-built homes.
Well, that's good, what they're doing.
But I'm just saying, like.
That's separate.
That's, but he's just saying that he doesn't represent.
Yeah, I see, I, I hear you, yeah, I hear you, for sure.
I mean, it could understand a lot of home, you buy that double Y, same money.
Yeah, I would rather have a double Y than one of those.
Can we do that, can we put that in the public, can we double Y?
Oh, that's my idea.
Yeah.
You know?
No, no, we're limited to double Ys.
I, I don't want to see a bunch of junk, because I bet, still have probably fifteen years to live, but I don't see much.
Right.
I've also seen cities limit the age, I've seen cities do that.
And no use words, it has to be you.
Yeah, so like, I, so I would say, HUD came in, standardized the building process in, uh, October nineteen ninety-six. So a lot of the homes built after nineteen ninety-seven and now are all built to the same construction standard. I can say I've seen with other cities, a ten-year, uh, requirement. So no over than ten years is something that I've seen other cities.
I don't think, uh, like the commander, he's got a beautiful, twenty-six hundred square foot. But it's made for Eric and, and his, uh, it's made out of, uh, two-by-fours, two-by-sixes and all that. So, isn't the last, some of the manufactured home will last than five years.
Yeah, some built before October nineteen ninety-six, but standard quality is all over the place.
I did, but one of them, it takes a lot of, of.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Which, it was, it was great, I mean, it's, it's good homes, but you have to, uh, you keep by the piece of junk, right?
So I've seen age restrictions before, uh, the skirting, I've seen where they require concrete footers. I've seen, uh, going to skirting, like certain materials of skirting, like plywood doesn't last long, particle board doesn't last long, it's not a good skirting material. Metal can be good, uh, concrete board can be good, vinyl skirting is kind of cheap, but it can also stand, if it's the weed whacker resistant kind. We're saying like, we don't want the junk, I would say if you're gonna say skirting, plywood, particle board, that stuff, rots, and that's junk. We could put age restrictions.
Yeah, I, I saw that, uh, we had a water problem here in Monarch.
We have water limitations, we're not getting water, yes.
So they're gonna go one, two.
Well, I.
Well, that's SAWs, and so our, our problem's really with that, is that, that project, you're better than the SAWs.
No case.
No?
But they got lettered.
No, that's, that's all, a lot of spoken water there.
And they're saying they have the water.
All the way up and down.
Benson Road?
It is.
Is part of the map.
I've seen them work on it.
Yeah, they're, oh, the corner is always leaking right there, half city road and, uh, thirty-five. But they wouldn't have their hydrants, so that's going up.
That's city water, seven thirty water?
No, not on that city road, I mean, it's, uh, at that SAWs. Because Cynthia's the last house in the place and I cut it, and they have an ad SAWs, a water meter.
Well, they're gonna sell the customers something that they can upkeep.
They're have to pay to put it in.
Huh?
They're have to pay to put it in.
Because it costs a lot, that's what, I don't know how many, but that's a lot of meter, a lot of water.
See, but that property they have there were nineteen hundred, double. That, that, that's all that SAWs water. All the way from the corner, thirty-five to one hundred of. Because Cynthia has a meter, because I knocked it over one time with the tractor, well, not the, not the meter, but the, the cover, the, the SAWs water. So I called my buddy and said, you gotta broke cover over this, and they came out and put a new one on it. The shredder knocked it over.
Yeah, I was like, it's just SAWs, it's like a quarter of.
Yes.
Yeah. Right here.
It doesn't make sense to me.
Makes no sense. Okay.
Anyhow, tough, going back to the topic, it's a slab or is it like brick?
So they're all on bricks, but what we can require is concrete footers, uh, which is where the bricks, the cinder blocks land can be on concrete, I've seen that, Fort Worth requires that. It's a, it's like four thousand dollars more expensive to do it.
Yeah, but.
But it doesn't settle over time, like, well.
Will you, will you put that in the, in the.
Right, so right away, concrete, permanent foundation, I would suggest bringing, saying, if you're, throw them around, say, concrete footers.
Concrete footers?
Applies.
And skirting, I didn't.
And I'd also say the skirting, we, we want a lot of tight skirting, we don't want plywood or.
Like, it's a vinyl, is that vinyl?
Vinyl's more resistant than like plywood. Or like, when it's metal, it can be rusted, it has to be painted metal, it can't be that shiny, metallic stuff that rests.
So we're gonna.
The age restriction.
We're gonna go only with double Y?
When, when they're like.
I'm in favor of single and double Ys, if you want to say double Ys, then it'd just be a poor decision.
Yeah, because you can discriminate, people can't, some people can't afford a double Y.
Well, there's some new nice ones that are single Y that are nice and, is that any, sorry, price point, you know, that you're talking about portable housing?
Is there any statutory, like, is that, I know there's some legal requirements out there. Like, uh, what is it, what's all the stuff, you know, where, you know, the affordability requirements, when you can't, can't require you something to be more than two feet off the ground or some type, what is it, is it?
Yeah, I mean, you can, I mean, if somebody applies based port variants or something, that wants to claim hardship, you know, we'd be in a position, or it'd be hard to say him. Um, but I think that, for at this point, y'all can put, put a restrictions, double Y on it.
Yeah.
So that's a good list, I would think, as far as we're looking at the quality of the homes themselves. You're not, you're not a single and double Ys.
And one per lot.
One per lot.
Same as how?
Yeah. Not, not, they must set, it's gotta be a acre, because that's a requirement, where a topic would have a septic tank. It can't be a four acre, so they won't give it permanent plus septic tank.
Because you need three hundred feet plus.
Well, I mean, you guys are gonna get sewer eventually, hopefully, so.
But everything could be relooked at.
Didn't they change it to, or how do you have smaller, like twelve-hundred foot lots?
Who did?
The state?
First up?
No, not sorry.
It's residential, I don't know.
So I like some of the ideas we talked about, I don't really like number two, I achieve what you, I understand what you're trying to achieve, and I like that, like where you hit that, but, and then I like regulating the quality a little bit more than the neighbors use. So did you make those changes? Take the notes. Take some notes, take them.
You want the ten year?
Well, sounds like that's something we're talking about newer homes, I've seen that before. I think it's arbitrary to say ten years, I think nineteen ninety-seven is newer, but now that's twenty-seven years old. To say, if we were to put a restriction, I would suggest the ten year. But they can always apply for variants, right? So then I think start with ten year, and if somebody wants to apply for it, so they're gonna have to change it. So you got those notes?
Sure, I got it.
All right, anything else on that topic?
Do y'all want owner occupied or?
I like that.
Okay.
I love that, because it's people that are buying it.
They're, they're gonna be the ones taking the best care of it.
If it's somebody who wants to buy and put a bunch rentals, it's a different conversation, it's a different kind of person that's attracting. If it's somebody who wants to buy and put a bunch rentals, it's a different conversation, it's a different kind of person that's attracting. That's not really what we want, what we're going for, you know, people that took the survey that are owner occupied, that, you know, appreciate the manufactured housing, uh quality. Maybe do you agree owner occupied versus renters? Versus, you know, somebody buying, putting a double Y there just to rent it out, like that's not okay with what Brandon has proposed. Right, but somebody who bought a lot, you know, bought a lot of the mode, and they're gonna live there, but that's okay. Yeah, so we're, we're good there. Okay, um. Let me know.
It's gonna be a while before they can be able to.
Storage group on page thirty three, the next change, we made some changes. Uh limitation. So that's for accessory use. You've changed outside storage is not allowed commercial. R D two is not allowed. It is limited in R D three. As an accessory use. Yeah, I was just responding to the survey, the respondent said, um, they're, uh, they want the city to regulate outside store. Majority, so they want the city to regulate outside store, it's like, rationed that a little bit. All right, and then move on. The biggest change in nine point oh four, page thirty nine. We've changed the minimum and maximum lot sizes. Which is awesome.
Cool.
That's one of the concerns I have.
Yeah.
Early on, um I understand like the intensity is important, but you know, restricting the maximum size of a lot. I didn't feel that that was true, like what people wanted, so I backed it up.
Yeah.
Uh so now we have a minimum, you know, and so looking at the future. Minimum base district from lot areas point two. So to your point with the Larnar deals, where they're doing the super small lots, I think those are like twenty, I don't know about these up here, I think those are forty. So those would be okay, but those that they're doing on Pierceall, like twenty five foot line, that would be okay. So what is the point two of an acre, what does that dimension wise?
Uh it is um like seventy by one hundred and twelve, eighty four inch square feet.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for the.
It's a term of forty foot lots by one?
Oh, well, you asked what point two is.
So forty three, five, sixty, times point two is equal to eighty seven hundred. That's about seventy by one twenty.
Yeah. That's your typical conventional lot size.
And so these only really permit if somebody buys piece of land, they wanna rezone it, and it's not already residential. Then they could apply for N D two, if that's what they want, to do, and that's forty foot wide, or they could apply for N D one, they're gonna do better. I think that makes sense. Most likely, I think the bigger subdivisions that wanna come in, maybe do a kid or something like that, I think most likely they'll be planned districts. But they could come and apply for N D two. So that's good, okay. Are we good with that, those sizes? I think that's a little more flexible. At least for now, while we don't have sewer, you know, that could be updated in the future, maybe seeing, based off our survey, it's the highest priority.
Can we do like a main industrial group test?
Yeah.
So I just wanna make sure, um, cause I, I left it to where manufacturing homes are not permitted in the N D one and N D two districts. So right now, with the way it's proposed, with what you guys, you know, talking about, they're like, it's limited, it's limited only in the R district. And so, so I just wanna make sure, you know, that y'all know that, um, that y'all have that conversation, that, you know. That it's only manufacturing home, like if somebody comes in, um, and say they have some land in E T J or something, and maybe you have water, sewer, if they annex. They, they wouldn't be able to have manufacturing homes, so manufacturing homes, they have to have some sort of cycle, so I just wanna make sure that, you know, cool, that's the show, you're kinda moving in the direction of being more flexible with manufacturing homes.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, absolutely. I was sneaking in there.
I like the changes that we're talking about for the existing zone residential stuff, because that's really the ones that took the survey. Those in the future N D districts, I mean, if you were personally, I would say the same limitation would apply to N D one, N D two. I mean personally, but knowing that whoever comes in would actually be using those future based districts as somebody that's like trying to take the commercial property to an N D one or two. And that, so I would say that should be horrible, because they're already existing, that, the only stuff that's relevant is really the supply or the trial. So I don't know if it'd be that big a hit to people today, like those that respond to it. But somebody could always apply for variance.
Can't do any experience, yeah, they have to do a plan of the mystery.
But, I'd be fine with the same locations and people.
And um the code does allow, actually, yeah, I was gonna say the code allows manufacturing parts, but that's only in the district two.
Okay. So what do y'all think, so we're going back to manufacturer homes, and we, the limitations that we talked about only apply towards the residential districts that are currently zoned residential. So the people that live here, or that buy a property that's already a residential use, don't have limitations on the age of the home, skirting, concrete foundation, um. What Brandon pointed out is the future districts, so if somebody, people who've come to buy a piece of property that's zoned for commercial, or if they're in our E T J and they're trying to annex. The way it's currently written, the new district they apply for, there is no manufacturer home option.
Yeah.
So his question is, do we wanna have the same limitations in the future districts as we're allowing in current residential districts? Or do we wanna say in the event that somebody annexes or wants to change the property from commercial to residential, do we wanna say no, you can't put manufacturer home? Does that make sense? Yeah, I know, it's kind of a quirky question, but I knew you brought it up.
I knew you wanted to preserve the commercial.
And that's what I keep thinking, so like in that event, if somebody's actually doing that, they're probably talking about taking a legacy district that's not residential, could be M H P or commercial, and they wanna go to residential. Which we do wanna preserve the commercial.
We do wanna preserve the commercial.
Do you have a zone map?
Alright.
Do you have that for someone? I'm just curious, I, I know a couple of homes, I'm not sure that there's no.
Maybe to me, I'm thinking about E T J, because I think once you guys get sewer down here. Uh, you know, there's gonna be a lot more interest in extending the sewer, you know, developers extending what's already here.
So what the mayor's saying is that we take part of the red and we change it?
Yeah, so if we, if we left it as is, no manufacturer homes will go in the red. Or in our E T J, in the future. We've allowed it, we're allowing it with restrictions in the existing blue, which is the existing city, the existing people was what we, we were thinking of, we're making this decision. But if we don't allow it in the future district, then if they're annexed to the future, which might go either way, it may keep somebody from wanting to annex, or it may make them wanna annex. So do we wanna, basically the question, do we wanna allow it in the event that somebody wants to make this residential, I would say no. But I, I would also say yes, if somebody wanted to take a residential district.
So I think the same thing with E T J, yes.
Yeah. We do have the estate district that age does allow it, is it allowed there?
Yes. It does allow it.
Maybe that's the solution. Oh, it is P. All right. So in the event somebody's in our E T J, they wanna manufacturer home, they could apply, they could annex and apply to the estate district, the estate district.
Right.
Minimum size is five acres.
Right.
I would say in that case though. Do we still wanna limit it to only one home per? I only bring that up because I know there are several families that live on five acre lots that have two or three homes. They work for plan or family, but then it's, is that a whole apartment?
That's, that's the thing, that's.
So then they really could go by, well, then we don't have.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you had a request for a manufacturing home park coming, like the board were applying to you, and they just got to R D three, um, and then, uh.
Right. So I would actually say we're good. Right? Okay.
And uh, I don't hit it too fast, but um. We have adopted the subdivision code, and then the environmental requirements, and parking requirements, and now we're doing this. And when I, when we did the subdivision code, I had to change some stuff to make it, to allow it to be standalone, because there, there were some references in there to stuff we haven't adopted yet. Um and I just wanted to throw out the idea, and I don't know how difficult this is, but, I mean, this is a Jacob question. Can we, at the same time that we adopt the zoning portion, which does require its own, you know, notices, public hearings and things. Can we go back and like repeal and replace the subdivision code and the uh, the last round of stuff that we did? Um with, with all the tie-ins and references to the zoning?
So we have one document?
So we have just one final document?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, so I'll, what I'll do is, I'll make these changes. Um but then what I'll do is take this and reincorporate this back into the whole U D C. And, and make those references and things, and so the next time I see you guys, um, I'll give you a, a whole package. Uh but with the blue in it to reference this.
And, and definitions.
And definitions. Yes, sir. So yeah, next time, next time, it'll be, it'll be the finished document, it'll be the U D C that goes on the website, and we can get some down. You know, and, or, you know, and just have, um, but, but it'll be one, you know, one, when it goes online.
It's one document?
Yeah, because I'm sure, I know.
It's confusing.
I know we talked, and I know that y'all are looking at getting like Neat Code or Franklin or, or three sixty or one of those, so developers can go online and just see it like both cities. And so it'll be, you click on the U D C, and I have all those chapters, one through sixteen, and we'll talk that all at once.
Yeah.
And you guys will get your five hundred.
Can we do that on the twenty fourth?
Yeah, a little check, I'm, I don't think we have to publish again, because we published last month. This is all just been subsequent meetings, so you did finalize zoning commission, uh and then once we make our final recommendation, then it can go straight to city. So I think we should be fine.
Yeah, feel like go back to back?
Well, can they make a recommendation today?
Uh, so the zoning, um, hmm, if it changes.
I wouldn't. Uh if we go back to back, we don't need to make recommendations today. Then we could just approve it, the zoning commission approved it with the meeting.
I think there's a provision, Jacob, for joint, joint E and Z and council, I can't remember if it's just a general law thing.
I think still, if, if y'all are compelled to do so today, making the recommendation of approval to move forward with what we have today, based on, you know, the changes we've discussed. And that way, the city commission can take it up for vote altogether. And then we can make them into our existing ordinance based on what's already been passed.
Maybe we're trying to expand it all up.
Right, so like this in council, like this in mission, we approve it, file it forward. Yeah, so I think maybe as part of approving this one, we could also approve any amendments or integration that needs to be done with the rest of our laws. With the U D C, in, in.
So in fact, if we recommend approval today, then we bring it back to the meeting and approve it based on.
So if we approve it today, then we don't need to, we wouldn't need to bring it back to zoning commission, which would just be our strength to see.
But in the meantime, we can still make all those changes, so that's, they're in the file.
Yes.
And incorporating everything, getting the definitions. I, I would, I would like that today to confirm, I, I think that will be okay.
Okay, recommended approval of the zoning, uh, the, the, the recommend, or the draft zoning code as presented. Subject to the conditions discussed in the meeting today regarding making changes to manufacturing homes, and subject to the condition that, you know, um, yeah.
It's just subject to the recommendations.
Discuss today on, on campus, Jacob.
So do y'all wanna approve it today, bring it back to act?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about some, somebody's gonna have to write, write the motion.
Yeah.
The motion today should be to recommend approval of the zoning code.
Yeah.
Oh, I have your thing video.
Yeah.
Is he, is he to the.
Recommend the approval pending the edits discussed today.
I can, I can turn it over.
Well, how you guys, my, he's uh, you're all familiar with me. But he says he can't do it, so. He let the boss take care of it. He's got it all so down.
So, do you have any other phone number?
There's a phone number, then, uh, but then.
You didn't cover it?
They said to me, they, 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 they excuse me, rather, uh, I, because I, I have a daughter issue. And they said. I don't have, I don't have, I don't have. Uh, read it, but I didn't have it.
You need to go first? Better?
Yeah.
So what's it?
Long. Yes.
What's your phone number?
Uh, just inside.
Oh.
My wife's in here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so at this time, anybody like to make a motion to. Uh approve the change in zoning code, the city of Larnar me pending the edits and amendments discussed today in our Sunday meeting?
Like a recommendation of approval.
Yes. Make, make, make the.
Cause we don't, we don't like approve it, they just, the zoning commission has to review it and make the recommendation.
Okay, so this time, anybody like to make a motion to recommend the approval of the zoning code from city of Larnar me pending the edits. Uh and changes discussed in today's zoning meeting?
Yeah, we, we do that motion, if you can, right?
Okay, there's been a motion to recommend the approval of the zoning code pending the changes and edits discussed in today's zoning meeting, is there a second? I have been seconded, all those in favor?
Okay.
Motion active. Okay, motion adjourned. Motion adjourned, is there a second? I'm seconded, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, we're ready.
Twenty fourth?
Twenty fourth.
All right, I'll be ready.
So it's in ahead of time.
Oh, yeah.
Especially the definitions.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jacob needs to probably, and outside of that, it's a little easy thing, as I've explained, well.
I'll start working on the definitions like first, and get that out to you guys, then I'll work on incorporating.